We're gonna be here for two more minutes to see if our commissioners get here.
Yeah, no, like I had twenty. So, I started them three months ago. I got an email halfway, pussy two thirty one done. And this lady's like, hey, resigning. This lady. The one lady's resigning. So I had to go back and redo all of them and add the new lady on. I got yelled at because I hadn't finished it. Yesterday called me, where are these board members? Two months, I'm like, alright, so I did them last time. Had them all done. The lady's list, she had the names of the board members.
Hmm, that was okay.
So I got them all done last night. Spot checked this morning, I just happened to see Moscow. See, it's got with a K. So, it's like, I got nothing to do with that. It's like, alright, now I'm gonna go do my print stuff. Go drop it off. We'll get around five hours later. Should've laughed. No, I didn't get any done. And then Comcast, well, it's here this morning. But my day's been closer. That's why I hadn't done it. Like, if they haven't bothered me about it, I'm not doing it. I'm pissed with them for switching up, I mean, the CEO that's on, I'll be like, well, he's only temporary. So they're gonna make me call me in two months to redo them again. So first, first time I went to this place, I'm in a big boardroom with all the board members. All of a sudden, all of the people are like, people are, I guess, probably many people, so I'm fired. CEO in front of me. Well, this is awkward. I go back a second, the new CEO has a stroke in front of me. It's like I'm in the back here anymore.
I want to thank you all for coming out. And I'd like to introduce our Vice Mayor, Claire Tasha Mervin. She's been a part of the commission for over six years. And I'd like to bring her forward so we can get started with the Town Hall Financial Literacy Program.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, welcome to our, the city of Pahokee, first of all. Glad to see all of you and glad that you guys took time out of your busy schedule to come and educate our community on financial literacy. So we want to thank you and our hats off to you. Hopefully, and I know that we will get great information to take back. So again, we want to welcome you, each one of you, to our Town Hall on our financial literacy and know your numbers. Um, it's saddened to me that we don't have a gym full of residents to, you know, to get this vital information. You know, because we all have to know everywhere, somewhere in our life, we have to deal with numbers. Whether it be through your banking, whether it be through your kid's college, whether it be through school, we have to know what our numbers are. So again, I would like to say, welcome, welcome, welcome. And I'm here to take all the information that I can get because I need to know my numbers. Thank you again. Let me just say again, on, on, I don't see our mayor here, but on behalf of our mayor, Keith Babbs, our Commissioner Derrick Bolden, Commissioner Sarah Perez, and Commissioner Juan Gonzalez, we welcome you here to the city of Pahokee.
Next, I'd like to introduce our moderator for the evening, Carlos Mangual. He's our Operation Manager and he'll be moderating for the evening. Carlos?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say good evening to everyone and thank you for being here. Both, um, mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and Pahokee citizens. My name is Carlos Mangual, I'm the Operations Manager for the city. And I would like to take this time and welcome everyone to the city's first Financial Literacy Town Hall. On behalf of the city, its mayor and commission, we thank everyone that helped make this evening possible. From the presenters to you, the citizens and stakeholders of Pahokee. Without you, this forum would not be possible. Mayor Babbs, your vision and persistence in putting this forum together is inspiring. Thank you for the dedication to moving Pahokee forward. Mr. Lucas, through the Mayor Babbs' direction, you've gotten with each industry expert to present on their leading best practices and helpful strategies to, to advance the citizens of Pahokee. For that, thank you. Presenters, the time you spend sharing your expertise and talents with our community is invaluable and we thank you as well. Once again, thank you all for making this evening possible. And it is our sincere hope that anyone who is willing and desires to improve their financial future, enjoy this evening's Town Hall. Moving forward in our Town Hall, we will now have Mr. Carl Morrison Senior that will give us the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray, please. I'm gonna follow this one, again, we come before you to say thank you. Father, we want to thank you for this opportunity where this city can move forward. And we realize part of that foundation has to be based on finance. And we want to thank you for everyone that came out to participate, to help this community move forward. Father, we ask you to give us the guidance and direction that we need. And we'll be careful to give you the praise, the glory, and the honor. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. Let us all turn to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on, we're gonna ask our panelists to introduce themselves. And we're gonna start from this far left and move one by one to the right, okay? And tell us your name, who you represent, and what are some of your expertise? We can start with you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Natasha Blake. Um, I'm the branch manager of your local PNC Bank. I'm sorry, what up? Oh, my expertise is, um, I guess, educating on the, um, financial literacy, both on business and consumers. So I can help in that aspect.
I'm also with PNC Bank, I'm the business partner that partners with Natasha. And I'm here to assist small business owners, grow their business, and when any needs they may have along the way. Um, whether it's intake of cash, outflow of cash, um, just structuring their business, um, any needs that you may have, I'm here to assist and, and help hopefully streamline and make the business life go a lot smoother for you.
Give us your name so we know who to go ask for.
It's Artur Flores, or Art Flores.
Okay, thank you. Next?
My name is Yarnell Williams and I'm with EEMC Consulting. And what we do is help businesses thrive, um, starting from the foundation of small businesses and providing them with those financial needs and responsibilities that they need to know. And just keeping them abreast and aware and educating them on everything that they need to know financially within their business.
My name is Tamara Dowdell, I am a local Realtor in the area. Um, I service Pahokee, Belgrade, and South Bay areas, as well as, um, the eastern Palm Beach County. Um, and mainly my business focuses on education, just like the others, um, educating, um, residents on the homeownership process. Um, and how they can, you know, also own their own homes as well. Because a lot of our community, um, find that, or feel that that is unreachable. So that's my goal in my business, is to educate them, to let them know that it is something that they can achieve.
My name is Larry, Dr. Larry Diamond. I'm the CEO of Pahokee Black Wall Street District. And, um, we focus on strategic planning when it comes down to what we call a Vmosa system, which we deal with assessment, we deal with vision, mission, objective, strategies, and action plans. Uh, and so, uh, we focus on eight areas, uh, so that we can actually, uh, treat the whole individual and not part. So we do that in physical wellness, social wellness, uh, intellectual wellness, spiritual wellness, and there's one more that we deal with there.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Suresh Sabnani, I'm the CEO of Cherish Financial. Our company is focused in helping people to do financial planning. And, uh, and we support that with insurance products. And we can show people how to protect themselves and the families and to build a legacy for themselves. And, uh, here, my objective here is to come here to help people, educate them on what can be done, how to protect themselves. Because health planning, if it's not done correctly, can be devastating to their families. And so does financial planning. So these all go hand in hand, and this is where our focus is. And I'm here to help, advise, and give, uh, any advice possible to the people. And feel free to contact me later on. Thank you, God bless.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Patricia Balzazar. I represent the National Financial Literacy Campaign. Our main focus is financial education. So we have made it our mission to educate thirty million families by the year 2030. We don't discriminate, we don't look, um, over people. Any person who deals with money, we believe, need to have financial literacy. We look at everything in, in, when it comes to personal finance. We don't look at just one aspect of personal pi- finance. We look at the whole picture, which is what a lot of us are missing. So we do so by providing free workshops, we do them in schools, we do them in universities, public libraries, we do them in forums like this, in homes, we do them with our friends, and we do them online. So, um, that is our expertise in educating families. We also provide free literature, like this, this textbook. You see how thin it is? It's thin because we, we go over a lot of these, um, finance principles, but we do so in terms that everybody can understand. So our, our, um, main expertise is educating everyone on financial literacy.
My name is Royce Stilson, I'm the coach for Grace Central High School, and I represent Larry Diamond, Wall Street. And I'm a coach for the football team, basketball team. My idea is trying to help the kids, our young adults, adults, students in sports, uh, field. So, any question, wanna ask me about just football, basketball, sports, ask me. That's why I'm here tonight, representing Larry Diamond, only just Wall Street, just so, I'm on sports court, forty years in high school, thank you.
Well, thank you all for your presentations. Um, now we'll have, uh, Mr. Carl Morrison Senior give us a program overview.
Once again, we would like to say thank each and every one of you all for coming out. Because we have a, as they say, a superstar team sitting here with us. With the same goal in mind as for educating the community, as for their finances concerned. So, with that being said, we realize that financial literacy is a life ongoing learning process and it never stops. I don't care what level that you're in, it never stops. And we're all here to help, as you said, individuals and business build wealth wisely. That is the key, wisely. Because we're not gonna roll the dice. When we make an investment, that's a calculated risk. So you're not just taking a chance. And we're gonna find out this evening in reference to how do you manage a budget and plan for success in the future? And listening at each one of you introducing yourself, I think we're all on the same page. And also, with that being said, financial literacy is the knowledge and skills need to make informed decisions about money. About money. And with that, you learn how to budget. You learn how to save, you learn how to invest, you learn how to manage debt. And that's very important. And when each one of you all introduce yourself, you will basically saying the same thing. As for the responsibility of financing, it all comes together. Because let me say this. When it come to your finance, failing to prepare is preparing to fail. It's just that simple. If you do not plan to retire, at the end of the day, when that time come, you're lost. And you're depending on the system. And too many of us, as far as America in general, especially in this area, we depend on the system. And let's deal with the mindset. So that let us know our mindset has to change. Our mindset truly has to change. And regardless of how scared we think it might be dealing with finance, at the end of the day, that's what it's all about. When you go to the branch manager to get a loan from the bank, it's dealing with finance. And they're dealing with personal finance. And maybe in the future, we can discuss as far as getting your credit in order. Because that's part of the finance right there. If your credit is not in order, guess what? You're gonna get a high interest rate. You're gonna automatically get a high interest rate. Even dealing with the bank manager right there, if you have a business. If you do not know what that entails, you're gonna be lost. So educate yourselves to the point of finding out what that's, that, what that is. Now, there's four fundamentals in reference to, uh, this financial literacy. It's dealing with bud- a budget. First of all, what is a budget? What is a budget? It's hypothetical, but if you wanna come in at this time and answer that, you can.
It's a plan. A plan of how you're going to maximize your money, your cash flow. So, a budget, if you fail to, to budget, like you said, you're, you're going to fail. Yeah. So.
Anyone else? Well, let me break it on down to the lowest level, to each person's household. If you don't have a computer, have a spreadsheet, just get a regular tablet. Normally, you're gonna have certain bills you have to pay, that's part of your budget. You know what you have coming in, and you have to put your expense down. I know I have a mortgage, preferably it'll be over soon, but you're gonna have, you have to rent, mortgage, grocery, electrical bills, all of those things, you write down. And how do a person, I can show you since twenty oh two, at my house, I have, it, it wrote down. And then there, I have the name of the company, I have the account number, and I have the phone number. I have they do, the amount due, and when it's paid. And in the last column, I have how it was paid. If I paid by phone, I have the confirmation number. If I paid it with my check, I have the check number. All that's part of budget. That's the, that's the fundamentals of it.
Can I make an addition to that?
Yes.
You're right, so you write down the basic things, basic necessities for us to survive, housing, electricity, things like that. The other thing, though, that a lot of us are missing is subscriptions. Like applications, that maybe we don't even use. So, it has been my experience that a lot of people don't look at their credit card statements, they don't look at their bank statements, to catch those little things that you're paying for every month, but it's not in your budget. So you're not planning for it. And then, guess what? You're gonna get back into that cycle where you're getting into debt, you're paying with your credit card, because you're missing these subscriptions, these renewals. So, that's another thing that we need to consider.
You make a valid point, and that's how they get you. Automatically, it's automatically done. And if you don't pay attention to that, they'll get you every time. And I'm not gonna say it's in the small print, because it's not. They let you know ahead of time, this is how it go. It's up to you to make the notes, to make sure you keep up with it. Now, getting, getting back to that, that's called debt, okay? It's debt. And that's part of what we do not realize. Overlooking those small things, it, it adds up. It's add up. And again, I have to use my friend over there. When you go to her and you're looking for a loan, as for, let's get off the personal, get to the business. Each bank and lending institution, they deal with certain numbers as far as how your company is classified. I went to her about three weeks ago, in reference to my company. I let her know, hey, look at your number. My classified is number sixty-one. We have to educate ourselves in areas like this. We really do. Now, I'm gonna move on where each one of you all will have an opportunity. But we have six major characteristics of how people look at money, okay? One of the first one is feel good. People say, wow, man, he very tight on money. And matter of fact, Jockeys used to tell me, I was so tight that when I walk, I squeak, okay? But one thing they didn't realize, one, I just didn't throw my money away, okay? I really didn't. And I believe in waiting on a sale, point blank. I believe on waiting on a sale. But even to the point, I've had the experience of watching people that I work with. One gentleman, people used to call him tight, but he was financially wise. He used to bring a sandwich to work in Luminal Four, hear me out, in Luminal Four. He unfolded, he ate his sandwich, guess what? After he got through, he folded right back up. The next day, he was bringing the sandwich back in that same, the same one. To me, at the time, I didn't understand. But this gentleman educated me, and he didn't realize he was educating me. Listen, at the end of the day, if you don't manage your money, your money will manage you. It's just that simple. One man said to the corner of our, man, I don't know what happened to my money, but I heard it coming, and I didn't even see it when it was leaving. We have to pay attention to all of this. And we cannot be successful with money if we don't plan. That's the bottom line. And it's no harm in going seeking getting financial advice from people who know about it. That's how we're gonna learn to keep it. Now, with that being said, the last part of this, it says self-worth. That goes back to the mindset. That go back to the mindset. That go back to the mindset. We cannot be afraid to learn to deal with finance. We cannot be afraid. Everything is predicated on that. When you buy your home, it's predicated on it. We have to realize, listen, when you purchasing a vehicle, some people, and I'll use this example real quickly, some people, they say, I'm going to double up my payments. If your payments is three hundred dollars, they'll double up and pay six hundred. I say, no, you don't do it that way. You pay your three hundred and you pay fifty on the back end, and then it comes in and you get through paying for it quicker by doing it that way. So we have to educate ourselves in things like this. We really do. And once again, we want to thank each and every one of you for coming out to help us. And prayerfully, this would not be the last time you come out to help the citizens of Ophelia. Thank you. All right. I thought my friend ran and left out on me.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Now-
Good job.
Now, we're going to ask every panelist to give us three minutes, a presentation of three minutes, what you think financial literacy is, both as a private citizen and/or a business owner. We will follow the same order that we did before. Just before you get started, I'm going to let our citizens know that there is tables in the back where our panelists will have literature, or if you need to speak to someone, they can, you can go back and see them at their table and ask them any questions that you may have. In addition, we will have a question and answer session before we leave. So why don't we get started with PNC and give us some, some of your knowledge?
So if you guys have PowerPoint, Mr. Dorian, over there, way to receive them, or if you have already sent it to me and I sent it over, letting them know that you're so-and-so and they already have it, or you want me to take it over there, you have the drive to do that, so.
You know, the big, the big question out there, I always think is, is credit. Credit is something that we all need, we all have to have. It's very little talked about until you go to apply for something, and they tell you you don't have credit, you either have bad credit or for some reason, you've got really good credit. And most people that understand credit have learned the hard way, they've gotten themselves into trouble, they've done something, and now they have an explanation of how credit works. When you walk into the branch, you sit down and you apply for a loan, you either are denied or you're approved. I, I tell people, denial is not a bad thing. That's a snapshot and gives us instructions on how to prepare you and qualify you for your loan. But instead of taking one step further, you have resources, a whole panel of resources here that have experience, twenty years' experience dealing with financials. Come to us, ask us questions, pick our brain. Before you ever go buy a car, apply for a credit card, take out your first loan, this is something you should be planning for and being prepared for. Credit is a snapshot at a given time of what your finances looks like, what your payments look like. If you're getting ready to apply for a car loan, well, you don't want to apply for a car loan if you've maxed out your credit cards that month, because now your credit's been impacted. You want to make sure you've planned ahead, couple months out, so that when you go have your credit pulled, your credits, your credits paid down, your, your credit score reflects a higher credit score because you've paid your credit cards down, and it doesn't look like you're living on credit. And these are things people are unaware of unless they've spoken to someone like Natasha or myself. And again, going to the business side, all businesses fall on an owner. That owner is someone that represents the, their company. They have to have good credit in order to qualify for a business loan. So credit follows you across the board, someone goes to be with you for your entire life. And until you get a good understanding of what credit is and how it works, you may never qualify for a loan, or you may be paying enormous amounts of money for that, that car loan, for that mortgage. So these are things that should be pre-planned, and you have the resources here. The PNC is right down the street, Natasha's always there, we, I can come and speak. I've been dealing with business clients, I deal with clients that are over a million dollars in business on, on revenue on an annual basis. But you don't get there overnight. You have to have some sort of guidance, and that's what I want to say we're here for. We have many programs that we can come back out and educate you guys on certain, on credit portion, on underwriting, on all kinds of different resources or, you know, stuff that we have. So I don't want you guys to be scared that there's nobody out there to help you. We're here to assist and guide you and, and point you in the right direction so that you guys can grow and be successful. And that's-
I'm going to go ahead and start by saying trial and error, I'm going to use myself for an example. Pretty much what you don't know, you just don't know. And I think that is the, the biggest thing that we're missing or that's missing is the fact that most of the people, most of our people within our community, they don't know. It is starting individually from home. So how do we close the gap with helping parents and helping people within our community understand finances and understanding how finances work? So that's one of the biggest, you know, things within our community that we are lacking or that we don't have, and that gap that we need to fulfill is making sure that everyone understands, starting in the household as an individual. Because growing up, my mom did not tell me about, you know, keeping and saving money and savings account and how things, how money worked. So I went off to college and I parlayed, so, you know, I kind of did not know. It's not that I didn't want to know, it's because my mom didn't know, her mom didn't know, they didn't teach her, so she wasn't able to provide me that educational foundation that I needed in order for me to be successful individually with my finances. So I'm going to say again, individually, we need to close that gap and make sure that, you know, we are providing, you know, the educational literacy, and that's part of what I do even within my, my company, helping make sure that we are providing those foundation and those aspects that parents and community people need in order to make things happen. As far as the business side, a financial aspect, that is definitely one. You have business owners that are intelligent, but again, they lack the knowledge, they lack the knowledge and the skills to understand everything that goes with the concept of understanding my finances within my business. So within my company, we start from the beginning, we start from that structure, we start from where you need to start at. You setting up that business, you understanding what type of NAC codes or what is your business composed of, how can I set my business up properly in the beginning in order to make myself available for different funds and being able to go and sit at the bank and sit in front of the bankers and say what my business is set up properly? I have my NAC codes in order. My business is set up to run, everything is structured in the manner that it should be structured. So that's one of the most important things that a lot of business owners fail to understand or fail to realize, that you have to start from the beginning. When you start and you go to get your LLC or whatever it is that you're trying to be S corp, C corp, whatever it is that you're doing within your business, it has to be set up properly from the start, or you're going to backpedal. You're going to have a business that's probably, the statistics already say that most businesses fail within the five, first five years of getting established, and that's because they don't have that foundation. They don't have that knowledge. They don't have those things as to what they need. And so having those conversations with the small businesses in, you know, I talk to people that are highly educated. They're educated, but when I say something about a NAC code, a CIC code, they don't understand that lingo because they have not been privy to that type of information. So it's not a lot of times on the business aspect that the person is not, you know, wise or they're not smart, they just don't know. So just making sure that we build the correct foundation and provide our small business owners and entrepreneurs with the things that they need in the start, in the beginning. So I want to talk about, am I over my three minutes? Because I keep talking.
Keep going.
So I want to talk about one of the things that we did here for the city, for the Glaze Area period. We offered a business mentorship collaboration, and this collaboration consisted of small entrepreneurs, business owners, and people that were looking, prospective business owners that were looking to go into that, that arena. And so one of the things that we do, we have professional individuals come out to help with each aspect of business that the business owners need to know. For example, bookkeeping. You may think it's something that's simple, but that's something that is very important and key within your financial literacy, within your business. If you don't have proper bookkeeping, and if you don't have proper knowledge of how am I going to do bookkeeping and everything that I need to keep track of, you're setting yourself up for failure. Also, understanding, having business insurance, making sure that whatever type of business that you're in, you are covered in every area and every aspect because you don't know what could happen. So business owners need to be knowledgeable in that area as well. We had business banking information, again, making sure that the business, small business owners understand how banking works and how banking operates. Sometimes business owners, they go and get an account, and they don't get the proper account or the proper setup that goes with their business, so it doesn't align with what they need. So just to kind of stop or kind of just put a halt on having to backpedal. So that's like our main goal and priority, is trying to make sure businesses are set up from the start. Businesses are given the opportunity to do what they need to do within the beginning. And that's, I'll stop talking now because I'm really passionate about this. So, thank you.
Well, let me ask you this question. What numbers should a business owner know? One of the things I learned for fifteen years of operating that construction cleaning business janitorial, I had to know how to bid work by the square foot, so I had to know my number. Didn't realize those classes and, and algebra and all those things, trigonometry came into play, but it does pay off if you pay attention. So those kind of things. When you guys go through, just talk about knowing a person's number, like next up, when, when you talk about real, real estate, is that percentage, what is that percentage, thirty percent of your gross? And then it times out to the type of, of how much house you can afford, you know, or, when you graduate from high school, if you don't go on to college, how much does it take for freedom out of the house with mom and dad?
So I'll go ahead and say, one of the things that I did say was understanding your NAC codes and your CIC codes. Those are very important numbers to actually know when you are setting up your business and structuring your business, because those codes actually set you up for different things like grant funds. It sets you up for procurements, it sets you up in a category to where your business is able to receive those types of funds. So if you're not set up properly, because one thing that, and I guess you guys can speak on it, is that the banks look at is that how your business, what number is your NAC code? How much money, or can we give money? Or one of the biggest thing is, are you a risky business? Is your business risky? I'm not going to give you the-
She's spot on. Many people go in, the NICS code is a code that- It's classified what your business does. If, if that's wrong, you may be unliendable. You'll come sit down with me and it's automatic denial. So you have to make sure that's set up properly. Otherwise, we may go back six months, have to re-code it, and then restructure the loan and get things done right. So if it's set up from the get-go, it makes life so much easier, it makes the business run smoother, it, it helps with everything, and it, it goes back to talking to someone that knows what they're doing. Don't learn the hard way, you have resources out here.
Right, exactly. So that's, that's huge numbers, especially when it comes to business, that I would recommend or say that a business owner needs to know, and also making sure that the business owner has a plan, has a five-year plan driven out to understand what is my end goal in mind in five years? How am I going to be able to be sustainable as far as my business? And making sure that, because a lot of times, we, the first thing we get, we get money, and we think that whole hundred thousand dollars or fifty thousand, whatever it is, belongs to us, when really, we have got to go back and place that monies in the positions that it's supposed to go within your business. So-
And you can't make up your time. Again, to be lendable, you need to have history. Two years is the magic number in most cases. So if you've had things structured wrong, or you're doing things just fly by night, not register with the IRS, not register with the state, and you want to come in and apply for a loan, we'll tell you no, you have to wait now two years, even though you've been doing it for five, but you haven't been registered and doing it the right way. So it's, it's real important to get things set up from the get-go and doing it right so that you can grow your business.
And that's exactly what we're doing with my company, bringing it in. Yes.
So is it best to, if you started your business, was it been, again, you got all that foundation made? Is it best to, you know, so people-
Started the fa, the foundation, you get the LLC. I know a lot of businesses goes flop because they use their own personal money instead of getting like a business loan. So would you suggest that a business uses a, get a business loan compared to using your personal money that you run your house, your home with?
Well, I would say first start with a plan. Start with a plan so you don't waste money, that's number one. Number two, if you have the monies, if you have strategically mapped out what it is that your business is going to, what you're going to be doing within your business, and how much that is going to cost, just having a plan. Because a lot of times, people overspend when they're starting their businesses, they're using their, their own money. So I'm going to say, it's an individual decision. If you don't have it and you're ready and everything's, and you can get a loan, as long as you have a plan, and that's just my spiel on it, maybe.
No, I, I agree a hundred percent. You know, if some, some people have it, some people don't. My, my rule of thumb is if you can use someone else's money, use their money, because if something goes wrong, you always have your money to fall back on. And I've always thought that. And, you know, there's SBA loans out there for startup companies, so if you have the plan in place, the money is available. If the money's not available and you have to go to family and friends, you still should have a plan in place because you don't want to fail. Again, it all starts with a plan, talking to the right people, and making sure you understand what you're doing. Again, when you need the money, we're not going to give it to you. That's just how, how the banks work, that's how life works. If, if you don't need it, we'll throw it at you all day long. But again, it goes back to having a plan and, and knowing where you're going and what you're doing. Most business owners fall into their business. All of a sudden, one day, they wake up and it's profitable. They now need to figure out what to do with the profit. They put it back into the business, and, you know, every business owner I've ever met said they don't have to pay themselves a dime. Why? Because they see the, the value of their business and watching it grow. So again, it just goes back to having a good plan, fine, a, a sound financial, you know, plan in place and, and making sure that you follow it, and, and you have the right partners and resources available.
And I can't add to that, just to say, even if you go to SBA, if your business is not structured properly and you don't have all those things and plans in order, they're not going to finance you either.
I like to echo everything both of y'all just said. Basically, it's OPM. That, that's the bottom line, OPM. And we got to realize, even dealing with the tax system in this country, there's two different tax systems, two different ones. One for personal, which your uncle going to get his off the top. And then there's business, which you determine how much you want and you give him the rest. There's two different systems, and that's part of educating ourselves to that point. So with personal, we look at your social security number. With business, we look at your IEN number. So there is a difference. Thank you.
So as a Realtor with a background in accounting, when I think about financial literacy, financial wellness, financial health, I think about net worth. And a study that was done in 2017 found that black Americans' net worth would be zero by the year 2053. And I found that to be an astonishing finding of that study. So when you think about net worth and you talk about what it is, it's basically a picture of your overall health at a certain point in time. So when you're trying to calculate your net worth, you're going to look at your assets, which, which is the things that you own, and then you'll subtract your liabilities, which is what you owe, and that's how you come to your net worth. Now, a big determining factor in a, in many people's net worth is their equity in their home. So over the past four years, home prices in this area alone have gone from an average of one hundred and fifty thousand to close to two hundred and fifty thousand, just in this area alone, which closed the gap between us some, it closed it some, between us, between other cities in the county, the county as a whole, the state, as well as the country. So, I mean, we made some, some good gains over the past few years as a- So, I mean, we made some good gains over the past few years as a result of the pandemic and, you know, low inventory and things of that nature. But, when you think about equity, it's, a lot of people don't realize what you can do with the equity in your home. So, you can use equity in your home for various different things. I would recommend that if you're gonna pull equity out of your home, however, you use it to do things that are gonna generate income or increase your assets, not to just, you know, waste. So, you can do things like, you can start a business, you can purchase investment properties, you can pay for college. Some people may use it to pay for elderly, help care for elderly parents, and things of that nature. So, your equity in your home is very valuable. And I know a lot of people in our area probably don't realize that, and they have that equity and they just sit on it. And a lot of times, I've seen where you have people who own homes, they pass away, the kids are fighting, they don't want it, and the house goes, it goes up for sale in a tax auction, and they lose it. So, I mean, my goal is to educate our community about, you know, the equity in their home, the possibilities of it, and how to actually transfer that, you know, once they transition away from here. And then I also wanted to talk about investing. You can also use, like I said, your equity to invest, but a lot of people don't know or aren't aware that with an FHA loan, you can purchase up to a four-unit property. You can purchase that property with three and a half percent down, and they will use the income that that property produces to determine, you know, how much you can buy. So, they take whatever rent is coming in, pair that with your income, and then they determine how much you can afford to buy in an investment property. A lot of people aren't aware of that, but you can use an FHA loan for that. So, I just wanna, that is my goal, like I said, to make people more aware of things like this, to educate our community, to help them see that it is possible to own a home, to, you know, leave a legacy, which we hear a lot of people talking about these days, but we don't hear people really telling us how to do that. But, this is one of the ways that you can leave a legacy for your kids, their kids, and their kids. So, that's my, that's what I think of when I think of financial literacy.
And just a second, what she's saying, the equity in your home's gonna be the cheapest money you can borrow. So, you buying a house, putting money into your house, and having the value go up, when you need to borrow money, you borrow it from yourself at a very low interest rate. You came to the bank to borrow money from us unsecured, the amount we'll give you is gonna be half as what you could take out of your house, twice as much. So, you're investing in yourself at that point. It's, you know, homeownership is something that everybody should think about, because again, why pay someone else's mortgage, because someone else is doing that?
Okay, before I talk about finance... Go ahead.
Ms. Dada, I'm glad you mentioned that about the home equity law. A lot of people don't know that even with your home equity, you can renovate your home, you know, your roof and your windows, you know, all of that stuff. So, I'm glad you mentioned that. A lot of us don't know, you know, that the equity that in their house, you can use that, and then that be a more equity to make your value of your home go up more, because I know that's what I did.
Right.
And then your value went up almost like a hundred thousand dollars, you know, of your home. So, I'm glad you mentioned that. That's what, in our community, that, you know, we can, you know, hear that again on what you're talking about, the home equity.
Absolutely. And I know we have a lot of elderly people who own homes that need work, and they don't have the money on hand to do that work. And like you said, you can use that equity to do renovations on your home and make improvements, and in turn, increase the value of your property.
All right, before I go into finance, I want to tell you about why, my why I'm here. Mostly, you don't know me, because I left probably twenty-five years ago, but I'm from here. And I came from, I was born in Mississippi, and I started working in the cotton field when I was seven years old for two dollars a day. At twelve, my parents moved to Florida, here, in Pahokee, Camp Twenty-Nine, the old project. I graduated from Pahokee High in nineteen seventy-six, and then I attended Texas College. But, the why is this, is I came from the cotton field, came here to the orange field, went to New York, to the apple field, to the cherry field, to the strawberry field, came back to Florida, to the celery field, to the corn field, to the cane field. The cane field is what sent me away from here, you know. I was sitting in that cane field one day, and it was so hot, you could see the heat. And we was under that trailer, and I looked at AC and I said, it got to be something better than this. And so, I left, I went to college, came back in eighty-three, got married, had four kids, and through the process of experience, I was a mental health technician when I came back, and I did that for eight years. But, through the experience, I learned how to write curriculums, I learned how to write grants, I learned how to do business plans, to do strategic plans, to write programs, all those things there. And so, I retired in twenty-eleven, and I went to Mississippi. And I'm sitting there thinking about what it is that I need to do, because I know it's not over. And so, I ran into what we call Black Wall Street, Tuskegee, Oklahoma, and that right there put everything in motion, because if we could do this a hundred and one years ago, we surely can do it now with the technology. The key is, is that we have to unite. We have to come together as one. The time is up, there's a dark storm coming, and that storm is not coming to slave us anymore, it's coming to exterminate us. And it's gonna take the dark, whoever's connected to the darkness is gonna take with it. Okay? So, I'm gonna leave it right there. Now, with Black Wall Street, we are a established business here in Pahokee. It's Pahokee, Black Wall Street District, and I got that from Greenville, Greenwood, Tuskegee, Oklahoma. And so, we set up the district, it's a corporation, and this corporation is here, we are licensed, we are, everything is, the paperwork is done. We are probably gonna kick off in August. And so, what we want to do with the organization is, we want to train the peoples out of the community to run the organization. Question is, how the organization's gonna make money? The organization we have, when I go through this here right quick, here to kind of tell you how we're gonna make the money. We are not gonna make the money from the peoples in the community. When I first came, I said that we wanted to do it, we wanted to do it where they don't, where we don't have to charge you any money. Okay? So, but you're gonna have to put some skin in the game, because if it's free, then peoples have a tendency to not to just look at it as it's gonna be worth something. Mr. Morris said something earlier, self-worth. It starts with self-care. And so, I'm gonna walk, the best way to do this is to go through the process. We are about building peoples, building wealth, and community restoration, all three. What we're gonna talk about now is how the finance fit in there. So, the first step is a consultation. So, you'll meet with a professional life, life and business coach to define needs and goals of each individual, because you gotta get your goals together. But, the first, the other thing is the assessment, which I'm gonna get to next. And so, we do our initial assessment, which is to provide a detailed need assessment for each individual. What that does is, the assessment is gonna let us know exactly where you are right now, okay? Let you know where you are right now. And then, we have a scale that would put you there, where through these eight core wellness pieces that we have here. So, the next thing we do is, during a one-on-one coaching session, the coach and individual work together to establish a personal development plan. The next step was evaluation. After the one-on-one coaching sessions are complete, the coach and the client evaluate the progress and completion of all goals and objectives. Then, the assessment starts, the assessment take place. We do assessment, like I said, the assessment, it's an assessment, vision, mission, objectives, and strategies, and an action plan after that, which is, which would be a strategic plan. In these eight areas, if you put a strategic plan together in all eight areas, I'm gonna go through the eight areas, you will be successful in anything you do in life, you know. So, now, it took me twelve years just to put this together, and I didn't just put it together, I walked through it. So, the term is evidence-based programming, you're looking at it, okay? Now, physical wellness is the first thing, because what are you gonna do with money if you're sick or you're dying? So, I was at three hundred and forty pounds, now I'm down to two seventy, between two seventy and two seventy-five, because I put the plan together and I worked the plan. So, when you put the plan together and you work the plan in each one of these areas, then you'll be able to be successful in whatever you do. So, let's get to the next one, mental and emotional wellness. We all know that that's needed very bad right now. Spiritual wellness, social wellness, intellectual wellness, those five complete your personal development. You gotta deal with you first. There's no point in getting money if you don't take care of the other five first. Then, the next one is financial wellness. And so, in financial wellness, the same thing take place, we do the assessment, we do the vision, we do the mission, we do the objectives, straight on through. And then, after that, it's occupational wellness, because if you're gonna have financial health, how you gonna get the money? Where's it coming from? So, you have to put a plan together for that. And then, environmental. It's very important that you know what's needed in your community, and how you can get in the community and work, and it's all about all of us coming together still. The next step is the financial assessment, which we deal with income, expenses, budgets. I like doing the assessment. We have other people around the table that like doing the training and the classes and all that. We have that, but I don't necessarily want to do it. So, if you guys can do that, I don't have a problem with that, okay? And then, we get into occupational. We do the assessment in employment, career, entrepreneurship. So, whichever area you want to figure out how you're gonna provide the income, we have curriculums that we can take you through to help you become a better employee, to help you find a career, or to be an entrepreneur, okay? And so, the last one is, at that point, this is how we make the money for Wall Street, is that we have a membership academy. And the membership academy is online, and it opens up to the world. So, that's where we go and get the money, bring it back to the community, and then we'll be able to do things within the community as far as a concrete business is concerned. And so, the four, the five academies we have is the PEPs Academy, that's for your personal development, the ECE Academy, the CDSC Academy, the PBM Academy, and the PVD Academy. And all that deals with employment, career, the CDC is the community, and then the professional business management, and then professional business development. And that kind of, you know, conclude what we do as the assessment part is concerned. And we're not gonna go into building wealth and interact tonight. I just, the last thing I just want to say is this, it's very important to understand how important the legacy is. I refuse to go from the cotton field to the cane field and allow my legacy to be taken away from me. You know, so we have to, this is what this is all about. This is how we can build a legacy. You can build it through business, the insurance is there to show you how to do, your trust to do all those things that you need to do, you have other peoples to deal with your finance. So, look like everybody's here. So, the next thing is, what do we do next? Thank you.
I just have one comment on what he said, which is a true fact, and that was a personal experience with me. Wealth without health is not wealth at all.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I want to say thank you for inviting me, although I'm not from this community, I'm actually from Miami, and I have been in this financial service business for a while, and I've learned a lot. I'm still a student, even though I'm quite old in age by now. But, I want to say thank you to my esteemed friend, Mr. Rodney, and mayor, the vice mayor, the commissioners, and the panelists that are here for giving us an opportunity to come here and present our knowledge to us, to our community here, and we hope that what we put out today is going to help. And what I think is gonna make us all happier is when somebody comes to us and says, look, I need advice, because this is our job here. We are not here to conduct business. We're coming here to help the community. We're out here to educate them, to give them knowledge, because knowledge is power. And I think that is very, very important. So, I'm not gonna speak something which is tremendously new or unknown out there. I'm gonna tell you what the basics are, that my simple knowledge is gonna tell me about is, I'm gonna put out the basics out there and tell you what it is supposed to be like, and maybe I might be right, I might be wrong, I don't know, but I'm just telling you in general. So, when Mr. Rodney spoke to me a week ago, he told me about he wants to conduct this town hall meeting about financial literacy. I started thinking, what do we do? Where do we start talking about? Because this field is so diverse, from banking to real estate, to, you know, people learning about, you know, how to manage their money and how to live their lives, and credit management, and it's so big and vast, that it's like a sea of knowledge, and our little puny brain cannot absorb all of this. You know, I'm sorry, but that's the reality. So, I think what we have to decide, and we have to kind of, as panelists over here, put out there that, look, we are here to give help, to advise and guidance to people, but everybody's need is different, and each person has to decide on their own what is important in their lives, which part of their financial setup that they have is not done correctly or needs help with, and then come to that kind of panelist and say, look, help me here, guide me here, put me with the right person, or put me with the right connection, so I can go further and do the right kind of planning. So, I am going to give the grassroots, and as an advisor, I will be available. So, the first question I ask myself, what do we mean by financial literacy? What does that really mean? When we talk about financial literacy, we are usually referring to a set of skills that allow people to manage their money wisely, like my esteemed friend said over there. We have to manage our money wisely, because if we don't, money is like water, it flows away from us, and the more we try to chase it, the more it goes away from us. So, financially astute, recognize the wisdom of sound financial planning from an early age, and by doing so, improve the chances of achieving their financial goals. That is the bottom line of every financial planner, he's gonna tell you. My job is to sit with you, to tell you that what is your plan, where do you want to be at the end stages of your life financially, and we're gonna try to help you to get there. But, you have to be disciplined and structured in doing those things. So, why does financial planning matter? That's the second question. And the answer to that is simple. Financial literacy matters at many levels, from social welfare perspective, it matters graciously or not, whether people are going to manage their money properly and their affairs, and live within their means. Most people nowadays have that mentality, I'm making a dollar, I'm gonna spend a dollar ten cents. They're not considering that where this extra ten cents is gonna come from, but that's what they're doing. You know, you make X amount, but your spending level is much higher. And then, at the end of the day, they're in a hole, they're in a debt. And as our esteemed friend over there said, that debt management is very, very important. So, that's some of the stuff that I think we need to talk about. How do we get ourselves out of that situation? The importance of financial literacy for individuals and families, it benefits the financial literacy, which using shorthand can be described as being good with money. What is being good with money? Means we manage our money wisely. We do not go spending on stuff that you don't need. As Sister here said, that, oh, you know, people don't look at their bank statements or their credit card statement and see that they're paying five dollars for something, an app that is charging them five dollars a month, which they don't even use anymore. That's wasting of money, that's like a waste. You know, it's money that's being drained away from you, and you don't even know that you're losing it. So, those are little, little things that we have to look at and advise people that, look, this is some of the stuff you need to do. The financial institute recognized the wisdom of sound financial planning from an early age, and by doing so, improve the chances of achieving the financial goals. These goals commonly include the purchasing of a family home, usually combining savings and a sensible amount of mortgage debt. usually combining savings and a sensible amount of mortgage debt. That's where the banking comes in. This is where the financial planner has to sit with somebody and say, look, you're gonna buy a home, this home is gonna cost hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars. You have to manage that along with the debt that you're gonna accumulate. Because you're not gonna take a mortgage, there's a debt on your hand. That's something you have to pay back. Are you going to be making enough income to be able to support that kind of investment that you're gonna be making? Because a home is an investment. And putting enough money at one side for educating your your children. And importantly, to make suitable provision for your old age. Lot of people are not thinking about that. We especially, looking at young people nowadays, in their twenties and thirties and forties, who are making reasonably good incomes, are just looking at how I can spend this money and have a good life. I can drive a beautiful car, I live in a nice home. But they have done no planning whatsoever or thinking about what's going to happen to me when I hit sixty-five? When I'm gonna come to retirement age? Am I going to have enough set aside to keep the standard of living that I'm doing right now? That I'm achieving at this present moment? And that is where financial planning comes in. Financial literacy needs to come in. Um so we have to show them to have the awareness of planning for their retirement at an early age. And especially to those who are coming new into the workforce. Because now there are people who came out of the education system, education system, and they are young people coming into the workforce, starting to make money. And for them, they're only going after what's glittering out there, the glitzy stuff. You know, they're not looking at what's important for their future. As a result, saving for retirement is usually postponed until it becomes too late. Sometimes too late in the life cycle. What is the cost of financial illiteracy? That is being bad with money? Well, that's very apparent. Those who go through making poor financial decisions will inevitably wind up with far lower standard of living than otherwise achievable. Unfortunately, the opportunities for making poor financial decisions come thick and fast through life. Many of these, particularly for the young, are associated with easy access to credit and buy now, pay later. That happens a lot. Once you start to work, you start to get a little bit money, you go to the bank and you apply for a credit card and then you have a good credit because you're young, you know, you're making enough income, and then you go start spending more than what you're earning. And then the credit card debt gets getting higher and higher and your credit scores go down. So those are all examples of how we are helping out each other in this kind of stuff. It is not an easy matter to get out from underneath the heavy debt that occurs at this time. But those individuals and families who budget carefully and spend wisely can still fall into costly financial traps. It is often astonishing to learn how easily otherwise sensible people can be parted from their hard-earned money. This usually occurs in one of two main ways. Some people fall prey to straight-out financial scams or frauds. That's out there too. We have to be alert for these things. Because a lot of people will come with you, come to you and talk to you about a nice get-rich-quick scheme there. Oh, you do this and you'll get that. And next thing, guess what happens? You get this, they got that, they got your money, you know? So they they're left, you're left with nothing in your hand. So like good financial planning, we as in the insurance industry, we take a lot of things into account. We talk to the person, what is your goal in life? Where do you see yourself at your retirement age? Do you want to maintain the standard of living that you have right now? And what can be done to achieve that? Because a person, let's say for example, making a hundred thousand dollars of income has created a standard of living based on the hundred thousand dollar income. But they fail to understand that when he retires, he's gonna get a social security check, maybe three thousand dollars a month on an average. Right? If they're lucky. And if they're, if they work for a nice big company or, you know, a big corporation, they might get a pension check, another couple of grand. But that still only adds up to fifty to sixty thousand dollars. But they're having a hundred thousand dollar lifestyle. Their income is at fifty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars. They're short forty thousand dollars. How do they fulfill that gap at that age? Because now you don't wanna get older and sell your home and then having to go and downgrade your lifestyle. Nobody wants to do that. You always wanna be upgrading yourself. So our job comes in where we help people to look at this aspect and show you, enlighten you that, look, these are the pitfalls that can happen as you go forward. We are here to help you and guide you, to do the planning for you. So tailor your insurance policies to your needs. Make sure that you understand what kind of insurance is out there. And do not limit yourself to the workplace insurance. Because workplace insurances are only there till you are in the job. The minute you retire, that insurance is gone. So please, make sure you talk to a proper financial planner, talk to your bank, because they have good planners in place over there too, who can help you with this kind of planning. Because a comprehensive planning is very important. We do not realize also, which is not part of my presentation today, but being in the insurance industry, we have come to realize more and more that as our communities are aging, there's a bigger need for people for long-term care. And guess what? Medicare doesn't provide that. Our social security system doesn't provide for long-term care. So we have to plan for that ourselves. And I've seen many, many cases where families have been devastated because their father or their mother got Alzheimer's or dementia. And now they're spending tons of money to give care to them and the little bit of savings that they had put aside is all drained out. And then they have to depend on the Medicaid system to kick in. But what happens in that situation is the Medicaid is coming from the government. The government is gonna decide where that parent of yours or that individual is going to be staying. You don't get the choice. You don't get to choose what kind of care they're gonna get. They're gonna be put in an institution and you have no control over that. So financial planning will help with all of those things. Literacy in that department is very, very crucial. Because I know there's a lot of young people in this area, but there's also a lot of seniors in this area. I think it's imperative for them to start understanding what can be done, what planning can be done. It may be a little bit too late for the senior citizen to do the planning, but the young ones who are coming up in the family, if they're aware and they've been explained what can be done, I think that's gonna help. Thank you again for the opportunity.
I gotta tell you, he's saving me a lot of time, because a lot of the, well, everybody. A lot of the information that they're sharing, you know, I also share. So when you asked about what our expertise was, I was very tempted to tell you, I was an expert spender. And I started very early on. I am getting ready to celebrate my twenty years since I graduated from Pahokee High School, back in two thousand and three. And as soon as I got off of high school, I went a whole thousand miles away for college and as soon as I hit ground, I got a credit card, okay? And the funny thing is, when I was filling out the credit card, I'm like, but I don't even have a job. And they're like, it's okay, put your parents' income in there. And guess what I did? I put my parents' income, they gave me the credit card. So I started my debt journey. Um I wasn't ready for that education. Academically, I was not ready for for the, an engineering degree. Um I wasn't ready mentally or psychologically because the University of Michigan has all these resources to help people succeed in their degree. I wasn't ready, I wasn't mature enough to realize that I needed to take those resources. I wasn't financially ready. I had a full ride to to the university, they were all academic scholarships. And since I wasn't academically ready, I I missed out on the scholarships. I, you know, I I ended up having, um, losing my my scholarships and getting into student loan debt. So I came back home, I dropped out of school after my second year and I came back home uh to my parents' home, thank God for parents. And I came home with thousands of dollars in student loan debt and credit card debt. I started working and needless to say, I didn't have the education to manage my debt. I didn't have the education that when I started working, how to keep more of my money. Um so that's my, that was my expertise, is that the greatest um experience that I have is my own personal one. I know what it's like to get your car repossessed. I called a car, car, uh, car loan provider to come and get my brand-new car because I was on maternity leave, I had no income. I know what it's like to be defaulted, to dodge the creditors, because I didn't wanna talk to them. I didn't wanna let them know where I moved to. Um so this whole financial literacy is is like, um, I know I'm getting really personal, but this is my experience and this is what I'm, I I have the best knowledge of. And financial literacy is a very personal thing to me. What it is, Mr. Morrison said it perfectly, it's a mindset. It is a mindset and that's something that we struggle with in our community. We're relying so much on other people. And look, I work for DCF. I was on the other side where I was processing applications for public assistance benefits. I know what we have going on out here and it is really sad. So much potential, so much potential for growth. And we're not taking advantage of it. We have immigrants coming in here succeeding more than our own people that are here. Mind you, I'm an immigrant, okay? But I'm a US citizen now and I consider myself an American, Mexican-American. But anyway, I digress. The point is, we have a lot of potential. Financial literacy is a mindset and we need to work with our people. Look at how many people we have here. I was really hoping we'd have a full, a full gymnasium. Because this information is so crucial. We have a lot of people that, you know, that they're in the latest cars, you know, prom is a big thing. And that's great, I love prom, those are experiences that our kids need to, need to go through. But we need a plan for them. That's what it really comes down to. Thank you so much for putting up my slides. My name is Patricia Bautista. I'm so sorry I didn't even introduce myself. But I'm representing the National Financial Literacy Campaign. Um can we go to the next slide, please? So this is one of the situations that that we're facing, okay? The reality of why the poor are getting poorer. Bad habits, the mentality. They keep adding up, poor decisions add up. Why do the poor keep getting poorer? We don't budget. Just like Mr. Morrison said, if you don't create a plan, you're going to fail. I mean, I, you know, in so many words. Poor people don't have a financial goals. One of the first things that I learned from the Financial Literacy Campaign is, one of the first workshops was goals. I know what they are, I said, I have them right here. And they're like, no, 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 you have to have them written down. Why? I'm like, why I have to write them down? I know them by heart. No, because time passes by, you get flooded with so much information, life is happening to you. You don't have them written down, you're not going to keep looking at it and be like, oh, wait a minute, I'm nowhere near this, where I, where I wanted to go this year. So uh people don't have goals written down, don't have a plan. Um I'm, I'm sorry, I'm already blind, I can't see my my slides too well. But um they also have expensive tastes. And that's the reality. Uh I remember growing up, we had a single-income um household. We had not the latest brands. I had no idea what the latest brands were until I got to college. But a lot of my classmates did have, you know, the latest, greatest, the gadgets, the latest and the greatest. Um people are living with credit cards, with debt, with liabilities. And a large portion of their income is going to interest. Why is that? Because people don't realize what interest is. They don't realize what compound interest is. We go over one of um, one of the things that we talk about is compound interest. We talk about the rule of seventy-two, which is attributed to Albert Einstein. And the rule of seventy-two talks about, you take the number seventy-two, you divide it by the rate of return and what you get is the amount of years that it's going to take for the principal to double up. So rich people know this. So they get the best accounts and their money doubles up quick, right? So say, for example, they get a ten percent rate of return. In seven point two years, their income is going to, their principal is going to double. But people who are in debt don't know this. I sat down with a gentleman one, um, a few months ago to help him with a personal financial strategy, which we offer for free. And we were doing what's called a debt roll-up. So he had all his credit card information, like the creditor, the balances, the minimum payments and when they were due. And so I was creating the plan with with one of my friends, um, who was also part of the Financial Literacy Campaign. And we came to the question where we asked them, so how much are you paying on this? Uh um, how much is your interest rate on this particular card? That he was over two hundred dollars uh from the the credit limit. He had no idea what it was. So he went into his uh mobile application and he saw that he was paying almost thirty-six percent because he went over the credit limit. And he was only paying the minimum payment. Can you imagine when he was going to get out of that debt? If he did not take, look, if he did not get consciousness of what that interest was? So that's the unfortunate truth that our people are living today. Um they also don't prepare for emergencies. What is an emergency fund? How much should you fund your emergency fund? They don't work for, or or they work for a living. We're living paycheck to paycheck. We don't have enough month at the end of the check. Um they don't have good knowledge and often are not interested on financial concerns. Look at this gymnasium. We have so much great information to provide and this gymnasium is not full like it should be. So this is what we believe with the National Financial Literacy Campaign, our strong fund, um, financial foundation is. We begin with like building a house with proper foundation. So for example, a lot of us talk about investment, but we haven't dealt with our debt yet. Let's pretend we have a family, they have a hundred thousand dollars in investment. They have a six-month emergency fund, okay? Pandemic hits. They have nothing uh for debt, we're we're being uh positive here. They have zero debt, zero protection, not so positive. But when pandemic hits, what do you think is going to be the first thing that happens now that they, they're not able to work? They're going to go into their emergency fund, they're gonna tap that out, right? And we saw how long we were, you know, put away due to COVID. What's the next thing that's gonna go? The investment. And if you're lucky, that investment's gonna hold you over. And if you're unlucky, guess what? You're gonna go into debt. And then what? So we believe you start from the bottom, you gotta protect yourself. And just like my partner here, not my partner, but my friend over here was um saying, you know, you need to know your numbers, you need to see what your proper protection is. You're not gonna build a house, a little nine-hundred-square-foot house on a huge foundation, that's overkill, right? You're not gonna build in, the Empire State Building on a small foundation.
They can add to that.
The, the word to add to that is, what is your economic life value? What is your value that you're bringing to your family? That's important, that's the number that we're looking at.
So like I said, the the foundation, it has to be according to your needs, okay? If you're on a twenty-five-thousand-dollar annual salary, you're not going to need a million-dollar protection, right? That's overkill. You might not be able to afford it. There's no point in you, you know, purchasing something that you're not going to be able to afford. Okay, so um that's, that's some of the things that we go over in our series of six workshops. We go over goals, we go over um compound interest and what inflation is. A lot of us don't even take inflation into account when we're um setting up accounts, when we're setting up our our future, when we're talking about our um retirement. We're not looking at that. So now I'm going to go over the different places, I already talked to you briefly about the different places that we have taken our workshops to. Um if you can go on to the next slides, so so we've been in homes, like I said before. So the the workshops are not something that, oh, it's only for certain group of people. No, this is for everybody. So we've taken them to homes, we've taken them to public libraries. Recently, we did them at the Palm Springs Library, um, I I was fortunate enough to present. We take them to universities. If you look at this lady in the green, I don't know if you can read that, but that's Harvard School. She's a professor there and she's part of the National Financial Literacy Campaign. She took our workshops to eleven of the twelve schools at Harvard School. We also been to Columbia University and NYU. Um next slide, please. We take it to places of worship. Recently, we just wrapped up uh the series of workshops in Spanish at the St. Mary's Catholic Church here in town. Uh we take it to small businesses and corporations. We take it to government agencies. I don't know if you can tell what that flag is behind over here in the lower corner. That's the FBI. We had our National Financial Literacy Campaign represented there with our workshops on their um Citizens Academy. We've also bring it to friends and family on a per, on a one-on-one basis. And then due to pandemic, we were forced to move it online and that was actually a a great opportunity, an unfortunate, I guess, um, great opportunity for us that we took it online. So these workshops are available to the public. They're free, they're in multiple languages. We have them in English, Spanish, um, soon we're gonna have them in French. We have these books in Chinese, Vietnamese, English, Spanish, soon in French. And um yeah, this is, this is what we do. We do them for free. We recommend that you take these workshop, this series of workshops, at least seven times We recommend that you take these workshop, this series of workshops at least seven times because just like Mr. Morrison said, education is ongoing. And the reality is, it ha, you have to repeat the information or else you're gonna lose it. And to top it off, you gotta apply it so that you can actually retain that information. Cause applied, cause knowledge without application is nothing, you can drift away. Any questions? Sorry, I got a little passionate there, but that's, it's a strong topic for me, okay? Thank you. You can do them how, you can do them however you want to. You don't have to do them in order, they're what we call standalone. So you can do one, then you can do three, however you wanna do it. We offer them three times a day, Monday through Friday. Yes, you're welcome.
Robin A. Leroy Singleton, I'm calling for Grace High School. And like Larry Diamond said, we trying to get some young kids out in sports. And number one, if you feel like you wanna get your kid in the program, see Larry Diamond. We gonna plan on starting August, building the sports organization together, the team sports. And I've been coaching for years in the Vayves. You understand? So football, basketball, we gonna try to get the young kids in. The young kid gonna start at about like eighteen on up. So you wanna become a, a coach, help out with the sports program, get with me and Larry Diamond. We will probably start in August. We trying to get up there right now in Pohokee. We will start in Pohokee first. So you wanna get with us, let us know, we'll help your kid get in the sports program. However, we one of the top coaches in the Pohokee, whenever Leroy, face to the coach. You understand? So it'll start ages of seventeen to eighteen. So if you feel like your kid eligible, we have a, we have a application for your kid to bring home so your parents can look at and read it. And number one, you really have to get, read it, when we sign it, for your kid to read it and come and get to the sports program. That's helpful right now. Any question, let me know.
I just have a couple of analysis of comments. And I appreciate everything everybody said up here. And going back to Ms. Williams, what she was saying that our parents did not teach us a lot of this that we know now, but it's time for us to teach our kids, you know, to bring them to the dinner table and teach them now about finance, about how to save and how to bank, stuff like that. That's the time to teach them now. I know we have kids that's graduating from uh, high school now. This is the time to teach them now, we're going off, you know, cause you know what? Now I know when my kids start getting eighteen, credit card statements start coming in the mail, start, they start applying for credit cards. But I'm telling, no, how you gonna apply for a credit card with no job? Cause you have to have money to pay for that credit card. So I, I rip those up in, in, in my house. Um, the other thing is with the um, what I don't see up here that I wish we had, also we plan to live, but we don't plan to die. And so, you know, with funeral arrangements, you know, that's another. She talked about investments. That's like, uh, I was talking to an insurance guy and he was saying, what people don't know, that's an investment. We don't like to talk about dying, but it's a process that's gonna happen. And he was saying, even when my parents die, he says, it's eight of you. Each eight of you have taken out insurance on your parents. And then when, once they pass, you pay the little, the funeral costs, but look what you have left out of whatever, you know, the mountain you took out. And so that's another way that we even bring uh, uh, economic to your community. You know, that's how you make money, you invest in your, in your family. So, you know, I, I tell you, I just appreciate everything that everybody said up here. With the housing, um, you know, I always said, I'd like it with the housing. Uh, my son, now that just graduated from Job Corps, he's up in Tampa. And he's looking into housing and he's like twenty-two and got his the perfect, the good credit, good working. So it's, it's time now to teach them now, which I say, I wish I would've started at that age. By the time he get my age, his house is paid for, you know, and then he can always, and it's like, it's an investment. So, you know, I, I appreciate Mr. Diamond, I appreciate what you wanna bring to the city of Black Wall Street. You know, I think we're ready. If we could do it a hundred years ago with the finances they had then, we should be able to do that now with what we have now. So I just thank everybody for what they, what they brought to the city today. Thank you so much.
Can I add something to that? I, I do apologize, I was so passionate going on over my, my um, slides that I, I didn't mention. One of the services that we offer also, in addition to the workshops, is that we assist families with a personal financial strategy where we help them, first of all, take a look at their goals. Really sit down, gain consciousness and write down their goals if they have not written them down. We also take, we help them analyze their expenses, create a budget. If they are in debt, if they're in a negative cash flow, we need to help them with uh, with a plan of attack to their debt. The other thing that you mentioned, and this is what reminded me, is that we also take a look at those final preparations. There's a lot of us that have this misconception that wills are intended for the rich. No, they're not. If you are a parent, you need to take into account what's gonna happen with your children in the event that you are gone. So that's another thing that we also um, um, take a look at and we offer as a free service. Um, we are connected with over a hundred ninety companies and we help families with over three hundred solutions. Not every family needs a solution, sometimes families already have what they need, but we help them to see where they are standing. Thank you.
A couple of final remarks, uh, dealing with uh.
Okay, come on.
Um, everything you guys said was pretty much spot on. The only thing that I said that you guys, nobody touched upon. But I think if there goes detrimental to the business, there's a bank account, every house, every person. Nobody touched upon taxes. That's one of the top things that's plaguing all of us. Um, I myself, I have to go and re-educate myself on tax preparation that we all have. You buy a home, it don't have to go out of the average situation. Uh, you just buy it on this off the tax. Nobody talking about that, you know what I'm saying? A lot of people, business-wise, you can get all these loans, you ain't paid no taxes on the loan. Okay, now you just paid a million bucks, you gonna feel the same. Um, you gonna get all these different insurance structures, business structure, whatever, no structure. Nobody structured for not to become tax, tax liable. So that's the only thing that I see that is still on, I'm saying we have to.
Stop at my table, I have a book and we do touch on taxes.
Oh, probably, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, that's pretty much it, and especially for us, every, everybody's been running out, taxes coming in here. People went out to pay somebody, the taxes just walk away when tax preparation is free. Now that more like, uh, taxes are free, um, most small businesses, a lot of them missed that right, okay? And tax, that disruption, uh, like I said, but then again, you have to pay taxes, you know what I'm saying? So a lot of us, um, continue to get plagued by that. Um, you know, ones that do jump that road, yeah, you're safe, I mean, I'm gonna say it, but I have stumbled and failed a few people who I didn't realize that that was my problem. Um, but how many people coming out of high school? Um, first of all, when you talk to creating businesses, doing all this stuff, a lot of people don't understand, it starts from what is my, my, the fact, you're comfortable not having, if you started, um, if you come out and you started a meeting deal with a two-dollar salary, I don't have a intention for that.
Could you come up to the mic? I thought you were only gonna say three words, but you, you, you became a preacher.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, 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 I was just, I was just kinda like, excuse me, but I was just pretty much saying that a lot of people don't have the finances to do a lot of things. There's a lot of opportunities out there, but that's, you guys touched upon even, this young lady right here, um, spoke about, spoke about getting everybody up and going. But as we all get up and going, we still need to know what's the backend. The final preparation in, in the US is taxes. To make sure you align with your taxes and all of this here, um, that's the biggest thing. We look on TV, you see why Donald Trump ain't paid taxes. He just made two hundred million dollars, but I got out of it on my little twenty thousand dollar check. What is going on? What did I miss? What did I did? And that's a lot of preparation that a lot of the people pretty much would need to know also. If you guys haven't incorporated that into what you guys are putting out there, I would help, hope that you guys can um, add that piece, um, educate them as well. That's the start and the end when it comes down to doing what we do.
So I'll add to that, um, because that's one of the things that I'm sorry that I failed to mention that concerning what I do with my company as far as um, assisting. That was a part of like our business mentorship collaboration was understanding. So we had a professional accountant that came in that actually helped small business owners to actually understand the components of taxes, understanding the dialogue and understanding everything that is composed of with taxes. So that is a service within the services that are offered. And like you said, it is very important because a lot of business owners did not understand, you know, some of the verbiage that is used within the taxes and how the different write-offs and all, everything that changes, because a lot of things changes within taxes each year. Especially after the pandemic, there was a lot of changes. So we felt that it was important that a lot of the small business owners actually be privy to understanding all the changes because that's something that is ongoing. Anytime the state IRS get ready to change something within that, that bracket with it for taxes, that is something that is very important that small business owners, even individuals, need to know and understand. So thank you for bringing that up and actually, um, you know, cause I forgot to mention it, but that is definitely a, a, a part of what we bring to the table when it comes to assisting business owners, is that knowledge component with understanding everything um, with their taxes.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
And then just one more thing. It's up to us also to share with other people. We should've brought more people with us. I, I did my part trying to call people, trying to text them last minute, hey, where you at? So, you know, take it upon yourselves as well, we're a community.
I have a couple of last comments, uh, since you all left out with the taxes. Even in the structure of your business as far as a LLC, we have to realize once you start making thirty to forty thousand, you need to change that to an S corp. And just having an LLC, I'm here to tell you, you be the first one get arded. So switch to a S corp as soon as possible when you go to making a little money. Also dealing with the real estate, uh, what you said was very important and that's what I was trying to teach my son. As far as purchasing his first property, don't worry about a single family home. Get you a four-plex. You already been ridden, you have one, you got income from three. And that's how we have to educate them. Thank you. And dealing with you again, I'm glad you came from the personal perspective, okay? Cause what you're talking about with them credit cards, when we dropped our old list door off, you had tables lining it up, okay? We told her, listen to me carefully, we told her not to. Christmas time, she was more with her than us buying everybody gifts, okay? Guess who it wound up falling up on? Thank you all for coming out.
I wanna thank, thank you all for your information. It was a wealth of knowledge and I appreciate, and we all appreciate you being here and telling us all these things that we need to look out for. Now, part of the program will be the question and answer session. Is there anyone in the, is there anyone in the audience that have any questions for our panelists? Can come up, state your name and ask the question. Come on, I see some faces that are interested to say something, you can come on up.
I just, to like all to, uh, I want to prepare a patient on the next year project.
Well, right now, we are putting that together. And so we'll have a meeting and then we'll have the applications and then you just fill out the application. There is no fee, it's just being, becoming a member, you know? And you, when you become a member, then you have access to all of the academies. And basically what we wanna do is uh, take you to the academy and prepare you for, towards further corporation itself, you know? Because all of us, you guys are in the corporation. We're not just doing this year in Pohokee, Pohokee is the first stop because this is home.
Never forget where you came from. So we'll be going around the country setting up Black Wall Street districts in, uh, in the communities. Another thing I wanna say, this is not, when we say Black Wall Street, it's not just for black, black people. It's for everybody. Anybody that need the help, come and we provide it for you. The other thing is, if you have a large enough number of, of group of peoples in your, uh, in your community, it can be Latino Wall Street, it can be uh, Mexican Wall Street, it can be Asian Wall Street. It, it, it doesn't matter, we're here to help everybody, okay?
I want to say, young man, you wanna, wanna help you be a coach? I help to be a coach, for your kid, everybody's kid.
Okay, anyone else? All right, if we have no questions, um, I'm sure my, our panelists will be over by the tables. If you have any private questions that you would like to ask them, you can pass by their table and, and I'm sure they're, they're more than willing to answer any questions that you may have. Now, my closing remarks are simple. I wanna thank everyone for being here. I wanna thank all our panelists. We are looking forward to continue these programs and maybe next time we'll have somebody that'll talk specifically about taxes, okay? Um, you know, and, and, and any, any ideas that you may have of, of other topics that we may bring to the, to the community, feel free to contact City Hall and we will look into how we can incorporate it, okay?
I'll say one thing, just in case y'all wanna stop in there to meet, let us know, we will be here.
I'm sure you would. Again, my name is Carlos Manuel and I, and it, and it's a pleasure for being able to be the moderator tonight. And if no one else has any questions, I wanna wish everybody a safe journey home. Thank you.
I just wanted to add too that I do seminars for um, home buyers. I'm looking to do some investment seminars as well. I, I'm open to doing them at churches or any other organizations that you all um, might see a need for that at. Also, I had a little, um, just a little handout with a giveaway for a ten-dollar Amazon um, gift card if you were interested.